All right, folks. Welcome back to Carolina Conservatives. We are Preachers with a Punch. I am Dr. Nathan Streed and we have with us Demetria Carter, who is going to be running for the at-large seat for the Guilford County Board of Education. Those of you that's seen our videos already on the Guilford County Board of Education, they're candidates that were part of the New Vision, New Direction group that have been, that those videos have been some of our most popular, most downloaded videos. And so we wanted to ensure that we get our at-large candidate, Demetria Carter, in to to discuss the topics that we were discussing before and maybe a few others that we haven't discussed yet. So, Demetria, we're very welcome. Glad to have you come in and be a part of the Preachers with a Punch podcast at Carolina Conservatives.
Well, thank you for inviting me. I really appreciate the opportunity.
Absolutely. So you're running for the at-large seat. And so one of the, one of the questions that we, we asked of the other candidates that we just want to hear from you about is what do you see as the most significant, some of the most significant problems that Guilford County schools particularly, maybe education in general, that public education in general is facing? And what are you wanting to do about it, about some of those problems?
Well, let me start off by saying that having been part, a part of a number of forums where all of the candidates have spoken about issues in Guilford County schools and about schools in general. I know that there are a myriad of issues. One being that the Guilford County students are, their percentages of, of their proficiency in math and reading is very low at the end of the third grade and at the end of the eighth grade. But yet Guilford County schools tout a 91% graduation rate.
How's that possible?
Well, that's my question.
What are some theories that you have about what has of the possibility that, how do you get a 91% graduation rate when, when children are in the single digits of proficiency in math and reading?
Well, to tell you the truth, I don't know the answer to that. I can guess. And, and my guess is that the numbers are being fudged, but it's just a guess on my part. Who's doing the fudging?
Or do you think maybe that they're just graduating kids that can't read and can't do math?
Well, that's part of that fudging process, isn't it? Yes, they are graduating kids and we're about to get an influx of two huge employers. And I don't know how these graduated students are going to fare in that job market if they're not able to read. So there are a lot of questions. Certainly academic performance is one of them. I heard the other night, I forget the setting, about the amount of money that Guilford County Schools is receiving for the purpose of presumably improving, improving performance. But as I listened to their budget, the proposed budget for the 2223 school year, it topped at over a billion dollars. That's their budget. I could be wrong and I'll have to go back and, and look at my notes, but I don't remember there being anything in that budget dealing with performance issues, academic performance issues. So, you know, it's all about teacher salaries and principal salaries and assistant principal salaries and, and whatnot. A lot of that money was going to the administrative staff, but I didn't see or didn't hear or maybe just didn't remember what they talked about or what the budget was for improving academic performance. And so that's one of my issues with respect to the budget. The other one has to do with the transparency of how they're spending money now. What are they spending it on? Nobody seems to know, or at least nobody's talking. And the questions continue to be asked. Um, there's another thing that has to do with, oh, I'm sorry, it's not coming to mind right now. Sorry.
That's okay.
Let's, let's go. It may come back to me later.
Yeah. And so you were talking about particularly with the budget and, and we know that in the state of North Carolina, more than half of the state budget, the entire state budget goes to public education, more than half. I think the last figures was somewhere around 52, 53%.
I think it's up to 56% now.
So.
Property taxes.
It comes from property taxes, right?
Taxes, right.
So would you say that the, the public is getting bang for its buck here? Or are we getting taken to the cleaners about it for the amount of money that's being spent on public education when we've got kids that can't do math and do the reading?
Well, it does seem to me that the answer is obvious that all of the taxpayers are being taken to the cleaners. We simply don't know how the money is being spent. We can't get a copy of the contracts that are let on behalf of school boards, on behalf of the school board, I should say. So it's hard to know who's, who's doing what, what services we're paying for. Really, what maintenance is being done on schools right now? Even though they claim that they need a $1.7 billion influx of money through the bond that's going, that's going to be on the ballot for, for the May 17th primary.
Well, I'm glad you brought that up. Are you, do you support that bond?
I don't.
Why not? We, we know that schools are in bad shape. We've seen the pictures, we've seen the videos, they put them all over television and all over the news.
That's, that's true.
So why, why would you not want to support the schools being rebuilt and maintained?
Well, here's a couple of reasons. I am in favor of the campaign that says, no, not now. And that is a campaign that is run by TakeBackOurSchools.org, or maybe it's dot com. They're a nonprofit. And it has to do with the fact that there has been over the last several years, and I don't know the number of years, that there's been an influx of revenue to the schools for the exact same purpose. I believe 300 million was allocated or given to the schools in 20, 19 or 20. About a quarter of that has been spent, but it's been spent on design work, if I understand that correctly. Before that, there was an influx of $10 million for school, school facilities. I understand that a lot of that money still has not been spent. I don't see where the effort has gone into upkeeping, maintaining the, you know, the, the facilities in schools, but yet someone has said that we need another 1.7 billion. And I frankly, because of the transparency issues, don't understand or see how they're going to spend this $1.6 billion. Well, at the same time, they haven't spent over 300 million that they've been given to maintain the facilities. So, no, not now? Okay. So no, I don't think we need the $1.6 billion now. But once there is, if I could use the term reckoning, an accounting for which schools are in need of what? I'd like to see that detailed list. I'd like to see some numbers associated with those improvements or rebuilding efforts or facility services that, you know, whether it's roofing or HVAC. I'd like to see again, a listing in what order, because there is an order of importance. The worst schools need to be addressed first. There should never, there should not be any rebuilding effort. There should not be any building efforts of new facilities until these other schools, until there are decisions about what to do with these other schools. If you're going to move a student from an old building, old school to a brand new one that you've just built and then turn, tear down the old one, I understand that. But I think there has to be some justification. Someone in the maintenance department or the facilities director has to say, this is our list and this is what we need to do and this is the order in which, in which it needs to be done. And these are the estimated costs associated with making those, those changes, improvements. But I understand none of that's been done. So somebody pulls out $1.7 billion and doesn't know whether or not that's the amount that's needed. Maybe the amount that's needed is only 1 billion or 750 million. I don't know. I haven't seen anything. There's nothing transparent about what they're doing.
So there's literally been, what you're saying is there's literally been no, really no checks and balances. So
None whatsoever.
There's not been any, and, and Project Management 101, it leads everyone to, to know that you provide deliverables.
Right.
And there's been no deliverables that's been provided with money that's already been spent. So you reward deliverables with more money to bring more deliverables. Well, how do you give more money when there's been no deliverables that's been, been, been added? That's what you're saying.
That's exactly what I'm saying. I used to work for the federal government. I used to be a contracting officer. I was also an attorney. And so I would see these project plans.
Right.
And along with the project plan, there would be, if you will, a requisition.
Yes.
The, the amount of money that was being requisitioned matched to the project plan. I haven't seen anything like that. And I do recognize that the budgeting at the local level is way different than the, the budgeting at the federal level, but it's all coming from taxes. So why, why shouldn't there, why isn't there this sort of accountability? Someone saying, okay, here's what we need to do in this order, in this importance. And here's my estimated request for, for budget. And so that's why I say, no, not now. We need to reverse the order.
Right.
In which money is obtained, revenue is obtained either through a bond or some other place.
And you're, you're just not willing to write a blank check.
I'm not.
But this board is, this current board is willing to write a blank check and the county commissioner.
And the county commissioners, absolutely. And yet I was reading something the other day that said, while the bond is 1.7 billion, the actual cost to the taxpayers is more like 5 billion.
Wow.
Now, I forget the source where I read that. And I hope I got the numbers right. But I, I thought, well, well, this is absolutely crazy. This is absolutely crazy. So.
It's, it's, it is amazing that, you know, we think that it's monopoly money almost, you know, but this is real money.
It is real money.
You know, and, and here on Preachers with a Punch, we like to tie everything back to scripture. And when we're talking about being a good steward of, of resources, especially resources that are not your own. This is what, I mean, people got to realize that this is the collective resources of all the taxpayers who are in good faith, paying their taxes.
Right.
And, and expecting to be, for them to be used and to be leveraged to the best, the best possible way.
Right.
And that's not happening here.
It does not seem to be happening here. And, you know, I, I don't understand why not. These are all elected officials.
Right.
They are accountable to the voters. Uh, but they're, but it, it seems to me that, that either they don't care about the voters until it's time to vote again. Or they know that the voters won't put up a fuss. Either way, they, it seems to me, my opinion, they get to do what they want, when they want and how they want to do it.
So I want to just, you, you mentioned something here and I want to switch gears to this just a little bit. Something just now that you mentioned is very important that they, the politicians really just change to what, to when it comes time for the vote.
Yes.
That they want to appeal and attract to the, so all of our, all of our viewers, all of our listeners, those of you who are not watching, is very clear that Demetria is an African-American woman. Okay?
Is it very clear?
It's very clear.
Oh, okay.
So understanding that, you're a Republican.
I am a Republican, yes.
So when most, when most African-Americans, especially in Guilford County, are Democrat, you're an anomaly. So what would you say to, what would you say to other African-Americans about continuing to vote for Democrats? And particularly Democrats on this school board?
That, I think that's, that's hard to answer only because I like to think that I think for myself, to say that I, when I first started to vote, when I was 18, I was a Democrat. My father and the rest of my family are and were Democrats. But as I grew in my career and I started to work with conservatives as well as Democrats, I began to hear about the other political spectrum. And I would, knowing that they were Republican, I would ask the question, well, why, why should we, whatever the position is, and they would just tell me what they thought. And then I began to read a lot more. And I began to pay attention to the politicians, to the person who won at my vote, and I would listen to them. I would listen to them in terms of, of what they would say and what they wanted from me and what they were going to do if they got into office. And then I, and then I started hearing stuff I didn't like. And I, through my readings and talking with other people, I'm still a Democrat. I had an epiphany. And that epiphany was that I don't like what I'm hearing coming from the Democrats. They think, this is my own interpretation, they think that black, that black people really do need a hand up and a handout. And that affirmative action quotas was the way to go about it. We were just going to, you know, we're going to have five out of 100, you know, be in this position or whatever the numbers was. And although the Democrat Party would say, no, 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 these are not quotas, but we're trying to help the black man, you know? And I began to see, look, no, that's not for me. I can help myself. So my very first vote was for Ronald Reagan.
Wow.
And I knew at that point that I had broken from my family when it came to political ideology and measures. And I continued to vote for conservative politicians, sometimes to my chagrin, because they let me down and other, and other Republicans. But I really did know that I was a Republican and I changed my affiliation and, and all of that. And I have not looked back since, but I have kept reading about, you know, certainly on my career, I wanted to, to get ahead. And the more I read, then I wanted to, to connect with some of the conservative blogs. And I began to read those every morning. I would get to work about a half an hour before I needed to start. And I would read them every morning and just to see where they were going and what their thoughts were on a particular issue. And the more I did that, the more I realized that I was really a conservative. And I never, I really never looked back. And then I started to think about, well, why, why do most black people vote for liberal causes or for, for the Democrat Party? Because when you, when you, when you look at the makeup of the black community, you'll see that they're pro-life. You'll see that they are religious, very spiritual. You see that they want nice neighborhoods. They want police protection.
Absolutely.
They don't want to be scared to be in their homes or to walk down the, down the street. They don't want drive-by shootings. They want to make a good living. They want good jobs.
They want good schools.
And they want good schools, absolutely. They want their kids educated. Because I remember when I, I, I graduated from law school, my family was very proud of me. Even though they knew I was a Republican, they were very proud of me, you know? And I see that a lot in the black community. So I don't understand. There is this disconnect for me. I don't understand it. And it could simply be something like a couple of things. One, because their fathers voted Democrat, they're going to vote Democrat or their mothers voted Democrat. This is how they're going to continue to do it. The other thing is that the liberals have a tendency to give free stuff.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
So for, for a lot of black people, communities that are struggling, getting free stuff is a wonderful inducement.
It's hard to vote against Santa Claus.
It is hard to vote against Santa Claus. I, I don't know, but I do believe at the same time, they continue to vote against their interests.
Yeah, I believe that, yeah.
And I don't know how to break the cycle. I wish I did, except I think Biden is doing it. The, I read the other day that Biden's support among the African community is down to something like 65%. Now, Democrats have always maintained a 90-some percent hold on the African community, but no longer. Cause when we go to the pump, the gas pump, and you're now paying $4, at least $4 a gallon, it is hitting people in their pocketbooks.
Hard to sustain that.
It is hard to sustain that. And then, so the question is, why would you vote for a party that literally took away, you're right, to have gas at a more reasonable rate? Biden signed the, what is it, the repeal or the elimination of the Keystone Pipeline on day one? But he allowed the Russian pipeline to go through.
Yeah, for Germany.
For Germany. What is that all about? I don't, I don't get that. Or he's concerned with Ukraine's borders?
Yeah, but not America.
But not our own southern border.
Right.
Which I say is intentional.
Oh, of course.
But, but I mean, this is way away from my running for the school board.
Not necessarily, because what, you know, thinking about it in our schools.
Yes.
There's no doubt about it that there is what is called the achievement gap.
Yes, there is an achievement gap.
What the achievement gap is to the listeners who don't, not sure what that is, is that in most instances, black children, African-American children, they perform significantly less academically, significantly worse academically than their white and Asian peers. And mostly the Asian peers perform at the highest. Then there's the white students and then Hispanic students and then African-American students perform at the lowest. And there is a great divide between the two. But now, Demetria, here's the, here's the issue. There, there's no denying that that exists.
That's correct. I don't deny that.
Here's the issue though, is that particularly in Guilford County Schools, it's been existing for 30 years.
Yes.
But Democrats have been in control of the school system for 30-plus years.
Yes.
And every year promising that they're going to close that achievement gap, yet it still exists.
Yes.
So if we are not going to, if we are not going to allow for someone else to come in and do something different, isn't that the very definition of insanity?
Yes.
We're doing the same thing over and over and over with no change.
Well, I think, I think we're doing one thing or maybe a couple of things different, but I, I see these as distractions. And that is, notwithstanding what many people think, critical race theory has been introduced into Guilford County Schools.
True.
It sort of explains why there is an achievement gap.
Oh, really? How's that?
Well, what that theory posits is that black kids, it's not their fault that they're not reading at the appropriate grade level, their comprehension of reading at the appropriate grade level, that they can't do math in a certain amount of proficiency because they're black. So they shouldn't feel bad about being able to read it only in a, you know, 8% proficiency. Because it, it's actually the fault of white people. It's actually the fault of that student, white students next to them. They shouldn't blame themselves. They shouldn't have to try any harder. Because no matter what, they're not going to be able to do better. Now, if that isn't discrimination, I don't know what is.
It is outright racism.
It is outright racism. And I meant to say if that isn't racism. It, it, it is. It is this, this thinking that black people are just too stupid.
It, it is the, you're exactly right, is the old-fashioned deficit theory.
Yes.
That black folks have a, have a mental deficiency that white people don't. And so poor little black folks, we're going to have to.
We're going to have to step in and help them.
To dumb down this process for them.
Yes.
The elitist white saviors have to come in and try to, try to fix that.
They do.
Black folks don't need the elitist white saviors.
Well, some of them, I, I'm not sure they give any thought to it, but some of them would say, well, yes, we do. Because why should my child have to work hard in order to achieve a C or B or an A? When in fact, they can be excused, you know, from having to meet those proficiency requirements. So I don't know, I reject that argument because I've heard it all my life. And I reject it. And I keep saying, but look at me. You know, I was in school once. I, I, you know, in, in certain grade levels and certain subjects, I didn't study hard. I didn't study at all. Cause I didn't like the subject matter or I didn't like the way it was being taught. Or I didn't understand what was being taught and how I had to approach solving issues or understanding what was going on. And so the teachers that are behind CRT and this critical pedagogy and this social emotional learning, Social emotional learning uh basically have given up on black students. It reminds me of, I think, the eighties, I think it was in the eighties, um, of Ebonics.
Hmm hmm, that's a good point.
You know, and I say, this is Ebonics on steroids.
Wow.
If any of you remember what what happened with Ebonics, I think it started out in California or Oregon. And those people have gone Looney Tunes. Um, is that teachers said. Their black students could only speak in this sort of black patois. Dems and does, right? They couldn't speak, they they couldn't speak English properly. And so they weren't gonna try to have the students speak English properly. They were gonna allow them to simply speak in this patois that they they learned at home. You know, D's dogs or Dems, whatever. And the black parents rose up in unison and said, oh, no, you don't. How dare you tell me that my child is too stupid to learn how to speak English properly?
That's right. That's right.
It, this is, CRT is the same thing.
Yep.
We're just calling it something else.
It is ideological slavery.
Yes, it is.
All over again.
It, yes, it is. And it's usually, and I hate to say this, it's usually these. Theories, you know, Ebonics, CRT, others, is um usually led by, promoted by. Very educated, white liberal women.
And usually rich.
And rich women, cause they feel very sorry for the black kid or woman or. Man, and they have to be helped. Uh, I think Booker T. Washington or maybe Frederick Douglass said, why don't you people just leave us alone?
That's true.
We can make it, but you just gotta leave us alone.
Right, yeah, yeah. Opportunity, equal opportunity, give our students regardless of color.
Right.
Equal opportunity and let them and give them the tools that they need.
Right.
And let them succeed.
I agree. And some of that may be in the methodology of teaching. You know, maybe there's some innovation that's needed to spur uh interest. By these kids into these subjects. Now, I'm not a teacher, so I don't, I don't claim to know. What that is, but there are, there are a lot of innovations out here. I'm thinking, I've read some about how to teach. How to get children interested in a particular subject. Um, I I'm all for uh innovation, I'm all for experimentation. Um, but what we find coming out of these education colleges. Is is more CRT. It's more SEL, it's more indoctrination.
Yes.
So we don't want you to, you know, first of all, black students, we know you can't think for yourselves anyway. So we're just gonna tell you what you need to think. And and be done with it. And so what if you can't read when you graduate from high school? So what if you can't get a job? So what if if you going, you you wanna go to a technical college after high school? At the one ninety-one percent graduation rate, and your first day in that technical college. You you sign up for remedial reading.
Which happens.
Yes, and remedial math. Wha- what does that say about the high schools? They're not educating our kids. And I think when I was coming up, that at least when you graduated from high school, you could become a mechanic. Right?
Right.
You could go into HVAC uh facilities and and whatever skills, you know, or carpentry.
And some sort of trade.
Or some sort of trade. I I, I don't know what's going on. So when I look at the school systems. I'm worried. I be, I'm just so worried about our future. I don't have children, I don't have grandchildren, but your children and your grandchildren are gonna lead this country. If we have a country in twenty, thirty years. I want them to know what to do. I want them to be smart. I want them to be able to think about. What it is about the decisions they make and how they make them.
Right. I I'm with you. I I I feel exactly the same way. And, you know, in the 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 time, little time that we have left. I just want to, you know, just just reiterate that. You know, it is our desire to see children to succeed, to have the opportunity to succeed. Regardless of what color that they are. And.
Absolutely.
You know, because they are going to be the leaders of the nation. They're gonna be the leaders of our churches, of our synagogues, of our mosques, of et cetera, et cetera. They're gonna be the leaders of our communities.
Yes.
All over the place, and we want talented, learned leaders. And when we try to take the approach that. You know, kids, just because you're a certain color, that you don't, that you need to have extra help, and you have to have. You have to have the handout to get to what you, to get where you need to be, and that you're just, you're just too dumb, you can't make it. That is, that's a hundred percent a racist thought. And we've got, we've got to get beyond that. And just to hear someone like Demetria talk like that is is just encouraging. This is the kind of people that we need leading our school boards. Because they understand that we've got to give our students the opportunities. And then unleash their potential and unleash their abilities to become all that they can be and that all that God has for them to be. And instead of trying to put up the barriers to keep them within this certain parameter, just because you've got a certain skin color. We reject racism like that, whether it's soft bigotry or whether it's outright, which I would claim that it's outright bigotry. We reject that.
So the soft bigotry of low expectations.
Correct.
If you don't, don't have eyes, high expectations for students. Uh, whether you're a parent or a teacher or a principal or the community, then you're gonna get what you expect.
Exactly. Hundred percent, and that's what we're getting now. We're getting that now.
Yeah.
Folks, we encourage you, go out and to vote. We're coming up in this November. You're you're not running, you you have no primary.
That's correct. I I'm on the general ballot in November.
And you're running against, uh, his name is Jay Sharose, Sharus.
Alan, Dr. Alan Sharus?
Dr. Alan Sharus, who is the pastor at First Baptist Church in Greensboro and is a Democrat, who supports LGBT. Who supports CRT, who supports keeping children in a ide- ideological uh slavery. Supports all of that garbage. Right, correct?
I know about the LG. I know about his support for that uh community. Uh I have not read about the other stuff. So, but I'm gonna, I'm gonna take a look.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
So I would encourage folks that don't be, don't be confused by just because someone says that they're a pastor. We have a lot of wolves and sheep's clothing out there. We've got a lot of enemies within the church. So don't be confused by that. We need folks who know how to lead school districts and lead school boards. People like Demetria, who is sold out to ensuring that our schools are successful and that our children have all that they need. Folks, we encourage you, get out and vote. Support these folks who are who are taking a stand for what is right. And thank you so much, Demetri, for coming on Carolina Conservatives and Preachers with a Punch. We appreciate you, and we wish you the very best of luck.
Thank you so much.
Folks, we'll see you again very shortly.
Bye.